Good evening. Welcome to the Planning Board meeting of August 12th, 2025, in the Carver Town Hall, Meeting Room 1. The proceedings will be videotaped and rebroadcast by Area 58 TV. If we could all please stand for the flag.
(inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
Good evening, everyone. The first matter on the agenda is an A&R plan. This plan is a division of lot A3, as shown on plan, located at Wareham Street, Carver, Mass., assesses map 128-2-0 in the residential agricultural zoning district. I am going to recuse myself from this matter and turn it over to the Madam Vice Chair. Thank you.
Okay. So if you're coming up here to speak, just make sure you sign your name and say who you are.
Cut it in. Okay. Good evening. I'm Ken Conti. I'm with Beals &amp; Thomas, a professional land surveyor, here tonight on behalf of the Buzzards Bay Coalition. And I believe you have copies of the plan in front of you, which is a division of the existing parcel A3. I do have a set of revised plans with me that I asked you to review. The revision that I made to the plans is that we added the confirmed wetland boundary on the plan that was approved by an ORAD back in July of 2022 and is still in place and in effect. So the original MyLAR copies of the plan and... (inaudible) 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 Again, this is a division of an existing parcel A3 that was before this board earlier this year, purchase of the property by the Buzzards Bay Coalition. The existing property in this area has three buildings on it. One is a previous office and a guest house. And then the main house is the smaller parcel that's kind of surrounded by the other parcel. All the property, all the parcels on the plan meet the current zoning, frontage, and area requirements, as well as offsets, building offsets to the property. We've fully monumented all the property. And I think the plan meets all the requirements.
I have a question. If the Coalition bought the land, why are you selling a portion of it?
So we're not selling a portion of... I'm not... I'm here just to subdivide the property. I'm not sure what that occupies or what the plan is.
Okay.
So maybe the question would be, what is the purpose of the subdivision of the land?
Yeah, I believe it's just to separate the properties for residential purposes. The three buildings were in front of the board of health for new septic systems, and I believe that the Coalition has gone forward with putting those septic systems in place or in the process there.
Would they have any other questions? It's not a public hearing, unfortunately, but...
I believe the remaining land all around is under conservation restriction. I think this is an excluded area.
Okay. All right. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
I'll second that.
Okay. So taking your part.
Curtis Lake says aye. Kevin Robinson says aye.
Mr. Shea says aye.
Ellen Sedillo says aye.
Thank you. I'll get the MyLAR signed for you. I'll take it. We have to ask you to just run copies for us so the board doesn't have to sign either one.
Oh, after. I'm sure they'll pass.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Very much, Ken. My statement.
Madam Chair.
She's out for this one, too.
Hmm?
She's out for this one, too.
I didn't know if you...
Oh, she's out for this, too?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
All right. So the next item on the agenda is a request by King Richard's Fair for minor modification to site plan 5-9 Edah Avenue, assesses map 87 lots E-2, A-1, and E-1 in the Taurus Commercial Zoning District.
Are we allowed to do anything at the other place?
What?
That beautiful screensaver with the B Street?
I know. Should we put that back out? We can go to the Bahamas instead.
Good evening. Madam Chair, thank you. For the record, Sarah Sterns with Beals &amp; Thomas, and with me is Matthew Pelletier, representing King Richard's Fair. We're back before you this evening with a request for a minor modification. This has evolved since our last meeting in July with the site plan decision that was issued to now include some, I guess we're calling them portable gazebo's, some additional small vendor booths essentially, that will not be permanently affixed in place like the ones we talked about previously. Just switch to this plan here up on the screen. The ones in blue are the ones that were the subject of the earlier discussion for site plan review. Everything clouded and shown in red and pink are what we are proposing to also include for this year's fair. And again, these are all very small vendor gazebo's, booths to sell crafts and wares out of, essentially some additional structures for those that weren't able to build a more permanent one as part of the other swath of buildings. We have been talking with the building commissioner in Carver about the best way to approach this. Because they don't... They aren't affixed to the ground and they are mobile, it was not immediately clear that that should have been part of the site plan review. So in getting building permits for those, he did ask us to come back to the planning board and just have this discussion as part of a minor modification. We are continuing to work closely with Mr. Palmer, and he's been out to the site several times and working with Matt about the details of each of these structures. So he... I spoke with him this afternoon. He conveyed to me that he feels very comfortable with the process, just really wanted us to talk to the board about it, just to make sure everything was transparent. So again, the details are all being worked out, but we wanted to just let the planning board know what the plan was for these. And Matt had shared with me some photos that I thought might be helpful to get a visual of what they look like. They're very simple, small structures, all smaller than 200 square feet, you know, just open air for the most part, not open to the public. There will just be the vendors within them. And that... This one here just kind of shows how it sits on the ground. The plan is for these to be sitting on existing pavement or asphalt, most of which on former paved areas that housed rides and whatnot from Edahville. So really just taking advantage of some of the open space out there. And then addition... In addition to the gazebo structures, there were three... We were putting it all in here. Three structures that came from the former King Richard's Fair site. So again, all very small buildings, but in not, you know, not a permanent concrete footing, just a little shed. We have two little sheds. And then we also included the mushroom. So I'll leave that up there. So all of these are locations, or at least for this season, are shown in red on that plan that I just had up. Again, they can be moved. They may not be there next year. We can put them wherever, but you know, just this is the plan for this year and wanted to make sure that the planning board had all of the information that we're working with the building commissioner on. So I'll stop there, and if anyone has any questions, we're happy to try to answer them.
Oh gee, I don't think they have a mushroom bylaw.
Probably not, but...
I'm not going to wing that one.
Quick question. How far is the nearest building away from the major building here? Right there, yeah?
Right here.
Yep.
I mean, it can be... It can be wherever.
I was going to say, yeah, so the idea of them is that they are mobile?
Oh, I'm sorry. The idea of them was that they were...
Matt, tell us who you are.
I'm sorry. Matthew Pelletier. The idea of these is that they are mobile, so they can literally just be picked up and moved on skids as you would like with any small shed. But the answer to that question is very much further than, I think, the 12 to 15 feet that they required with the permanent buildings. The whole idea of them was to consume the areas where there was mechanical rides and pads and places, so that... Otherwise, it's just an empty circle of space of impervious area. So we figured by using that, at least for this year, we're also not adding, you know, even more impervious areas. We're not pouring concrete. We're not doing anything new in that nature.
At the end of the season, will they be put together somehow or prevented from blowing around in case there's a big storm or anything? Is there any...
Yes. So when I had spoken to Rod, we have quite a few ideas to tie them down for storm, you know, uplift and everything like that. We've gone over a couple different ways. So if necessary, they will either stay affixed where they are right now until they get moved in...
Well, not affixed, right?
Well, into the already existing pads. Because on these pads, it's... I mean, again, and there were mechanical rides, so there's pavement all over the place, but under that pavement, there's large footings of concrete to hold down a mechanical ride. So we could essentially just bolt down into the already existing concrete, and when it's time to move them, remove the bolts, move them out of the way, and get some testing done, so maybe we can do some permanent building there. But that's just the...
Okay. And Connie, just to reiterate, Rod had brought up the same point, really just for inclement weather. There's a, you know, hurricane that comes through. How do you lash it down? You know, it's great that they can move around, but just for safety and not destroying everything around it. So same idea.
That's all the questions I have.
That's it? Okay. So being that the board doesn't have any more questions, and we've had this discussion, let's have a vote.
Madam Chair, if I may, just to clarify, we do have correspondence, both from the fire department, that the public safety group does not have an issue with the temporary structures as proposed in the submittal. All structures have to comply with number two below, and we ask the applicant to make the separation in the distance from the structures as much as possible and place them in their resting place. Number two basically talks about newly constructed buildings and existing buildings with a change in use shall be built or remodeled to comply with current building and fire codes as they pertain to fire detection, suppression, occupancy, et cetera. Requirements for each structure will be determined once occupancy has been established by the building commissioner. Secondly, from the conservation agent, two of the proposed portable gazebo's are located within the 100-foot buffer zone to the wetlands on the north side of the site. As discussed with the builder, Matt Pelletier, the conservation commission would not require a permit for these structures as long as they are located in pre-existing disturbed areas, and no foundational work is required, and they are only temporarily located in the buffer zone for the seasonal use of KRF as proposed. He just wanted to let know that in case the planning board asks the conservation commission about approval for this, a permit's not required unless they start to make them permanent structures or additional clearing and vegetation within the buffer becomes a requirement. So conservation commission, public safety, spoke with the health agent as well, and the health agent has no issues with what's being proposed.
Thank you, Mr. Bott.
You're welcome.
Okay. And that's it as far as the board goes. No questions here?
Most of them.
Okay. So I guess we can have a vote.
I will make a motion to approve the request by King Richard's Fair for minor modification with the condition that a plan for securing the buildings be approved by the building inspector and that the distance from all buildings be 12 feet.
And I'll second that.
Okay.
Curtis Lake says aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Mr. Shea says aye.
And Ellen Sedillo says aye. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
I made the motion.
Who seconded?
I seconded.
Kevin.
Thank you.
You all set, Mr. Blader?
Ma'am?
Yes. Were you all set for that?
Yes, we're all set.
Okay. Very good. Next on the agenda this evening is a public hearing. There is a tree hearing to remove two trees, one located at the corner of Pine City Road in Plymouth Street and one located at 8 Wenham Road, assesses map 47-8-0.
John Woods, Deputy Director of Operations and Maintenance for the town. And three, Madam Chair, I know there's two trees on the schedule tonight. Can we put a third on? Is that possible?
I can't see why not.
Well, I'd...
No?
We better check with our...
Mr. Bott?
It does require a hearing.
Oh.
So while John and I talked about this earlier, and I said you can ask.
Okay.
But it does require a hearing.
Okay.
So we were close. If it was Pine Street, on the other side of the street, perhaps, but I think we're a bit out of it because of the other trees.
It's not in the area, John?
No.
Oh, okay.
Where is it?
It's on High Street. It's dead.
No, I've looked at the other two. The other two are...
Bill!
Yeah. The other two are very, very dead and create a danger to the roadways without a doubt. I have no doubt that the third one is either. I just don't know what the proper procedure is in regards to it. Because I think this whole, considering how very dead these trees are, that having to wait three weeks to go forth for a public hearing creates a safety issue, and I do believe that we should be able to move that schedule up somehow.
I would hope so if it's a dead tree, that's for sure.
I have no problem waiting if it's going to cause any issues. I don't want to get anybody in trouble, including myself.
Well, according to Mr. Bott, we should probably follow proper protocol here, but maybe we could get this put on the next agenda?
Yeah, if I may, just lean in with you. So obviously, if there's an imminent hazard, the tree ward is green lighted to take it in.
Okay.
But if, you know, dead but not killing anybody, it's different from dead and maybe killing somebody.
Yeah.
What do you think, John?
I mean, if it's up to me, I think we add it to the list and... Okay.
I think the other two would... I would consider imminent danger.
They're in the same condition as the two that are on the list.
I would think that we should...
I would agree. If it's a safety issue, then I would agree.
So we've got the one in Pine City here. I ran up the Google Maps just in case someone wanted to see the street view of what a dead tree looks like. So Pine City here and 18 Wenham here. So if anyone wants to see anything more than the tree ward is proposed, that they're dead and should be on hearings that are hosted, so we'll set you up.
Okay.
And these trees, no one's going to contest it. They're not big shady trees that people have been sitting on for 100 years or anything that just hazards.
Okay. Very good.
Now, it's my understanding the planning board access... Has access to tree funds to replace trees?
Okay.
And I'm not entirely certain on that, Mr. Bott.
Me neither.
Wasn't a donation made?
I am... I'm not certain about the mechanism for that, but yes, there is a tree fund and something that John and I have talked about before, that we sort of need to flush out and make sure we've got a proper process for that.
What do they do with the dead trees?
We just haul them away, chip up what we can, and then the rest gets hauled away to a site.
Okay.
Now, are you going to replace any of these trees?
I'd rather not because they're all on the edge of the road. The last time we did a tree on High Street, we gave a tree out... We gave trees out for Arbor Day, and I did bring a couple up to the resident on High Street, and he planted them in his yard, you know, off the road so that, you know, won't become a hazard for the town anyways.
Okay.
Very good. Any other questions from the board? Whereas this is a public hearing, would anyone like to come up and speak about this? I guess not. Would we like to close the public hearing?
So moved to close the public hearing.
Second.
Very good. Any other questions or discussion from the board?
Do you need a motion to approve removal of the tree?
That's it.
Well, we vote on closing the public hearing.
We just did, right?
We made the motions.
Motion to second.
Oh, I thought you made the motion to close the hearing.
I did make the... And she seconded it, yes.
Okay. All right.
But the vote to close the hearing.
What's that?
A vote to close the hearing.
Yes, okay.
Then a motion to take the trees down.
Yes, correct. Sorry about that.
It's okay.
Mr. Lake?
Curtis Lake says aye. Kevin Robinson says aye.
And Mr. Shea says aye.
Ellen Sedillo says aye.
Mary Ellen Williams says aye.
And a motion to approve...
Correct.
...the removal of the seven trees.
And we're going to do the three trees, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Do I get a motion?
So I'll make a motion to approve the removal of the three trees located at Pine City Road, Plymouth Street, Wenham... 18 Wenham Road and High Street?
16 High Street.
16 High Street.
Very good.
Second.
Second. Thank you. Mr. Lake?
Curtis Lake says aye. Kevin Robinson says aye.
Mr. Shea says aye.
Ellen Sedillo says aye.
Mary Ellen Williams says aye.
John Woods says thank you.
Thank you.
And who was the second on that, again?
Ellen was.
Thank you.
Okay. Next on the agenda this evening, Christine Coolstring requesting a special permit pursuant to Article 5-3 of the Carver zoning bylaw located at 86 High Street in Carver, Mass., assesses map 29 Lot 2 in the residential agricultural zoning district to construct a duplex.
Hi, I'm Joe Mamo. I'm the owner of 86 High Street. I was here about a month ago when you guys approved the other lot, and I'm here to try to get the right side approved. And I brought some pictures of what we're trying to do on this lot and the final decision of what we made on the other lot. Do you want me to pass them around?
Do we not have this?
So the front one is what we want to do on the new one, and the back one is what we approved and decided on. What you guys think? I'll call them off. Is your copy of the agreement? Yeah. So again, I kind of did this differently. I went through conservation and got approved with them and kind of went through the steps of, instead of going backwards and back and forth to them, so they approved it. The front house, I'm going to have to change it around a little because conservation, I had to shrink the house for them, but I'm going to try to keep it as aesthetically pleasing. I'm not trying to throw up the cheapest looking house I can, but it kept me tight on the lot, so I'm going to have to maybe use the bump outlets or something, but I would like to try and make it aesthetically pleasing.
The existing dwelling is on the separate lot?
Yeah, the existing dwelling was on the other lot. It was right on the line.
And the majority of this is to be inside the 100-foot wetland buffer zone?
Um, yeah, about 50% of it, I believe the calculation was. And we were originally going more, and they just wanted to scale it back a little because they had a certain requirement they needed to meet. But they were on board with it. They just wanted someone to clean it up, and they said the wetland wasn't a high-quality wetland as they described it, that they think it was mostly created by the Route 44.
So has this been adjusted to what they wanted?
Yeah, yeah. This is adjusted and approved. They approved the conservation.
Do we have a copy of their orders and the variants?
Yes, I believe it should have been submitted. Because it was recommended when I dropped it off. There was mostly the standard order conditions, the fence, the signs.
Well, you must have gotten the variants, correct?
Yeah, and the variant.
There's not a copy in the file, but we can certainly confer with the conservation agent.
Okay. Very good.
I will tell you typically that I'm not in favor of development inside any of the buffer zones, but that's up to the conservation commission. But what is up to us is increased development in the form of a duplex inside the 100-foot development. And I certainly, in a town that's over 50% wetlands, do not want to see that become a general or continuing issue. We've turned them down for it before.
Right.
And I just... I can't approve anything like this in the wetlands, in the buffer zone for the wetlands.
Okay. Would it be helpful to see what the conservation voted on?
Yeah, we can look at the variants in regards to it, but they could have only given a variance to put a building in there, not in regards to duplex, which is the only thing that I believe that we're addressing here tonight.
Right.
Conservation actually knew it was going... That we were proposing a duplex as well, and they were for it as well.
Well, they couldn't approve it until we had approved it, so as far as they were approving a building in that zone, but it requires a special permit from us for the duplex, and it's just... There's a lot inside there, and I can't... I can't in good conscience support it.
And that's why they made us shrink it to meet their requirement that the city holds. I forget the exact percentage that it was.
Working with a pretty small piece of land there, so it's kind of hard to squeeze over there. When I was on Concom, I know we used to like see at least half of the house or, excuse me, structure outside of the buffer zone, but I know you're working with a real tight...
Yeah, and then that's why they said they had to hold to a certain guideline, so that's why we had to put... I wasn't able to do the original house that I wanted. They wanted me to shrink it down because I had to go back with them twice.
How does the board feel about continuing this matter until we see what the conservation commission voted on or determined?
I would like to see what their variance stated.
Right.
I would... I would, but I honestly, I don't, in regards to this issue, I don't think it's going to really affect where I'm at at this moment.
Okay, alright. Any other comments? Whereas this is a public hearing, does anyone in the public want to come forward on this matter? Seeing none. Can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Lake?
Says aye. Kevin Robinson says aye.
Ellen Sidillo says aye.
Mr. Shea says aye.
Mary Lynn Williams says aye. Do we have any further discussion?
So that was a, I missed what you, motion was that to continue to the 26th?
That was actually to close the public hearing.
But if we're gonna talk about this more, we're gonna talk about it outside of the public hearing, just with the applicant. Oftentimes people keep the public hearing open if we're gonna continue it, but it's up to the board. At the next meeting, you won't take any public comment, it'll just be a conversation with Joe, bringing the goods from that, just so we're clear.
If we could do that.
Yeah, that's fine.
I will resend my motion.
Okay, very good, when they
We need the second.
We, the second. So we will keep the public hearing open until we have received the information from the Conservation Commission on their determination.
So that next meeting would be August 26th?
Okay, very good.
Alright, thank you.
Can I get a motion to continue?
I'll make said motion.
Second, motion to continue to?
August 26th.
August 26, 7:00 PM, Carver Town Hall, Room 1.
Yes, correct. Mr. Lake?
Says aye. Kevin Robinson says aye.
Mr. Shea says aye.
Ellen Sidillo says aye.
Mary Lynn Williams says aye.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next on the agenda this evening is the MBTA zoning bylaw discussion.
Party, if I may
Chappa Community Outreach.
Madam Chair, we have with us tonight Will Radigan from Chappa, who has some information to provide. Chappa has been doing public outreach in communities across Massachusetts. Will and I have been attending, well, his meeting, his regular cohort meeting for months now, and he's here to bring us information about impact of the law and some general information about how this works and what it looks like. So Will, there's a plug, you can plug right in there into your USB.
If you could just sign in and state your name. Sure, happy to. Hi, everyone, thanks a lot for having me, thanks Tom for the invitation. My name is Will Radigan, I'm with the Citizens Housing and Planning Association. And I'll sign my name here and then get started. Alright. Thank you so much for having me, really appreciate the invitation, thank you Tom for bringing me in here. I quick presentation, I'll get started, and then we can get into it. So, again, thanks for having me, I work for the Citizens Housing and Planning Association. We're a statewide nonprofit that works to make housing more affordable in Massachusetts. Most of my work is working with local communities on improving their local housing policies and trying to have effective housing policies, and for most of the last two years, that's mostly meant working with communities on complying with MBTA Communities Act, because that applies to almost half the communities in the state, and is a fair amount of work to go through the process of complying with, as you're probably finding out now. So, I'm here to give you some background on where the law came from, what it means for Carver, hopefully address some common concerns you might have, where you might be hearing from residents, and then talk a bit about what the process might look like going forward. I know the planning board has already heard a fair amount about this, both from Tom and from, I think Barrett Planning Group that you're working with. So, rather than diving too far into the technical details, I'll try to focus more on the big picture of what the law means, and what some common concerns might be. And one thing I want to make clear is that although our goal is to make housing more affordable in Massachusetts, and I think this law does that, I'm not here to tell you what to do or how to comply with the law, we're not. That's ultimately up to the community and your residents, and how to move forward is your decision, so I'm here to answer questions, provide information, and hopefully that's helpful to you moving forward. So, I'll get into the presentation. I think the planning board might know this, but I'll go through the basics again for the benefit of the general public. So, the MBTA Communities Act is a law that was passed unanimously, nearly, by the legislature in 2020, signed into law by Governor Charlie Baker, so had very broad bipartisan support when it was passed. It was passed as part of an economic development package for reasons that I'll discuss in a minute. And what it does very simply is it requires every community that is somehow served by the MBTA transit system, whether they have a station or nearby a transit station, to designate one area where property owners can have the option to build multifamily housing if they choose to do so, emphasis on if they choose to do so. It'll enable communities to decide where they would like to allow property owners that option.
Can you just, excuse me, Will, you just said one area?
Sorry, I should say, it can be one, it can be several, depending on whether you want to put all of that area in one place or spread it across the town. And I'll go into more into the details of that in a moment. And the goal is just to cut red tape and regulation that has made it hard to build housing in Massachusetts, and try to provide more opportunities for middle-class people to find a home in this state. A little update on where we are in terms of compliance, so this law's been around for about five years now. There were 177 communities that had to go through this process, 140 have now done so, they're all in blue. You've probably read a lot more about the towns in red in the media, those are towns that have not complied with it yet, but what I want to emphasize is that the vast majority of towns have gone through this process already. Carver is in this gray category of towns that have deadlines at the end of this year, which is about 30 towns or so, so Carver is amongst the last communities that have to go through this process, and because it's the smallest kind of community that's required to comply, it has the lowest requirements for how to comply, meaning you have to make fairly minor changes compared to some of the larger communities in Massachusetts. So a little background on why it was passed, sorry for the formatting error. The basic reason is that housing in Massachusetts is expensive, there is a shortage of housing that people in the middle class can afford, and this is attempting to incentivize the creation of more homes for middle-class people. So to illustrate that problem very simply, I always like to look at some local data for what middle-class folks can afford and what's on the market. So we consider housing affordable if you don't have to spend more than 30% of your gross before-tax income on it. So to take a sample middle-class job that I can find the salary for online, starting salary for a teacher in the Carver School District is $51,000. 30% of your salary comes out to about $1,275 a month. Average rent for one bedroom apartment in Massachusetts is about $2,400 right now, and if you're buying the median housing in Carver for $580,000, you're paying about $3,600 a month between mortgage payments, insurance, and taxes, utilities. So that is why this law was passed, there's this gap, if you're a middle-class person, it's very hard to find housing, and hopefully this is intended to provide more opportunities for folks to do so. The second reason is why this is part of an economic development package, is that the housing shortage in Massachusetts is causing some major economic issues for the state. And the biggest one is that the shortage of housing and more affordable housing for working people is driving young people who are renting or buying homes out of the state to more affordable states where housing is more plentiful, like Texas, Florida, and Ohio, and North Carolina, and other places. And we've seen this trend accelerate over recent years, so this is a graph of domestic migration from Massachusetts. We see that we're still getting college students moving here because of our great universities, our population of older folks and people between 45 and 64 is pretty consistent, but we're seeing this escalating trend of people from 25 to 44 leaving the state. And it's when people that are the age, they're launching their careers, they're starting their families, they might be buying their first home, and they're going to do those things in other places. And the reasons they're leaving aren't really a mystery right now, they've told us in the Greater Boston Chamber of Commerce youth survey, one, four young people said they plan to leave Greater Boston in the next five years, and cost of rent and ability to buy a home were the number one and number three reasons. And as an economic bargain, that's just not a good deal. Massachusetts invests a lot of money in education and training for young people, then to have them take those skills and investments and contribute to other economies does not bode well for the, the future of this economy. So that's goal number two, is trying to keep those people in the state. So we know housing is expensive, if you've had to buy a home or rent recently, you probably know that too. The question, of course, is why is housing so expensive? We live in a market-based economy, the prices of most things are determined primarily by supply and demand, and that's the situation with housing too, it's not much more complicated than that. We used to build a lot more housing in Massachusetts, this is a graph of how much housing we built per year over the last few decades. You can probably see that we built a lot in the 60s, 70s, and 80s, and then the 90s, that really slowed down and hasn't really recovered since. And you can see in dark blue for multifamily housing, that's what really fell off from the 70s to the 90s, and multifamily homes like duplexes, triple-deckers, condos, town homes tended naturally to be more affordable on the market, and that's what's making it really hard for first-time home buyers, people that are entering the housing market, to find a place to live. So, this is a zoning law, and it's intending to ask towns to make changes to their local zoning bylaws to spur home production and make it easier for property owners to build. So I think it's good to go a little bit over what zoning is and how it can affect home production. So, planning board knows this, but I'll say it for the public. Zoning is the set of rules that determines what property owners can do with the land that they own, determines what the shape and size of buildings can be, it determines what the distance between some buildings and others can be, and what the land can be used for in terms of residential, commercial, industrial space, or whatever else. And one of the things that has really made it hard to build housing in Massachusetts is that right now it's only legal to build buildings with more, with four or more homes in them, in 4% of Massachusetts. And then 96% of the rest of the state, that's just illegal to do, there are no opportunities to do that. So there are a lot of reasons, construction is expensive, there's high labor costs, material costs, taxes, building code regulations, but the simple fact is, it's just not legal to build multifamily housing in very many places, and nothing can be built until we have allowed zoning to allow that to happen. So that's what this law is trying to do, is reform zoning to make it possible to build multifamily in more places. And now let's get into Carver a little bit, I think you got some background on this from Barrett Planning Group earlier this week, but in the simplest terms, Carver has to designate about 16 acres where property owners will be permitted to build multifamily housing at densities of about 15 homes per acre. You might have heard this in terms of unit capacity in the past, generally it's not hard to talk about it because the state formula for how many homes could theoretically fit in a zoning district doesn't tend to be a great representation of how many homes would actually get built. Again, this is simply giving property owners options for how to use their property. If they don't choose to build multifamily housing, nothing will be built, but they can choose to do so, and so I like to talk about this in terms of the area in which you need to give property owners that option to build if they want to. Because Carver doesn't have a transit station in town, there's a lot of flexibility in where you can give property owners that right. You can put it just about anywhere in town that's developable land, so not in a wetland resource area, river or stream, or protection conservation land, and also you can't place this zone over publicly-owned or institutionally-owned land. One thing to be clear on again is that this zoning change, if it's applied to someone's property, does not force them to make any change to that property. If they have a single-family home, it can stay that way, if it's a commercial property, it can stay that way as well, but it does give that person another option for how they can use their property. PowerPoint is not doing well formatting today, sorry about that. So you do have to, by state law, create this area where property owners have the option to build multifamily housing, but the planning board has a lot of leeway in terms of regulating how that housing could look. So the town could regulate things like maximum heights of buildings, it could regulate minimum setbacks from roadways, parking requirements, open space requirements, requirements on having a certain amount of vegetation to screen new developments from other properties, basic architectural design guidelines, and maybe one of the more significant decisions, you can require up to 10%, but no more of homes in any new development someone chooses to build, to be deed-restricted as affordable to people that make 80% or less of the area median income. I'm sorry, I left the wrong number on there, I think in, in Carver it's around $92,000, so I should have edited that. So, there's a, a lot of flexibility, and I'm happy to talk more about how Carver can think about making those decisions. One key thing you can't do is you can't put age requirements on who can live in any new development in a way that would exclude families or working people and only allow seniors. So, I talked about how Carver needs to allow at least 15 units per acre, I want to talk a little about what that looks like in practice. And 15 units per acre is really intended to hit this kind of magic number we call missing middle housing, meaning that it's everything between single-family homes and larger apartment buildings, mid-rise apartment buildings, and the reason it's called missing is because we have a lot of both of those things in Massachusetts, but we don't have a lot in the middle. So it's everything from duplex to three-family, townhomes, small apartment buildings, but it's certainly not larger skyscrapers, large apartment buildings. So I pulled a few examples of what these projects actually look like near Carver that are 15 units per acre right now. So if you have really small lots, these can look like two-family homes or three-family homes. In Wareham, you have about a tenth of an acre with two units on it, comes out to almost 18 units per acre. In Plymouth, you have three units on about .2, comes out to about 17. A few more examples, if you have larger lots, you could look like one of these projects in Kingston or Middleborough, where you have seven to 14 units per acre on parcels that are 3, .3 to .8 of an acre, so kind of these mid-sized apartment buildings. In the area, a lot of these kind of look like larger old houses that have been subdivided in some way. And then just give more context on what it would look like if you chose larger lots. There's not a lot of these projects right now in the area, but just to show some examples of what 15 units per acre looks like on larger lots, you have a project on the left that has 88 units on five acres, comes out to 18 units per acre, so it looks like kind of a low-rise apartment complex. Usually something across a broader area with two to three stories. And then another example here, we have a, a mid-sized project, 10 units across just over half an acre, comes out to about 15 as well, and that's kind of a more modern example. Again, the projects I showed in the last slides are older, something that gets built today might look more like these, but it depends on the size of the lots that you choose. Smaller lots will yield smaller projects, larger lots, property owners would likely choose to build these kind of larger projects. And the other key question is, who does missing middle housing serve? So this is very much, at least intended to serve people in the middle class. Right now, if you're looking to buy a home in Carver, you kind of have two options, one is that you make a lot of money, if you make about $145,000 or more, you can afford to buy the median single-family home for $580,000. And then on the other end of the spectrum, if you make less than $93,000 a year, that means you qualify for deed-restricted affordable housing, and you could enter a lottery to get some kind of subsidized housing, there's very long wait lists for those, those apartments, but that is your option. But if you're in the middle between $93,000 and $145,000, you don't qualify for subsidized housing, you can't afford a single-family home, it's very difficult to find somewhere to live in this area, and the hope is that by providing market-rate units that are naturally more affordable, being smaller, more compact, these properties will be able to serve some of those people. One thing, misconception I think often is that this is capital A affordable housing we're talking about, it's not, you could require up to 10% of homes in these areas to be deed-restricted for people with lower incomes, but the other 90% are going to be sold at market rates, and whoever builds them will choose how much to sell them for. And another thing I should point out is that they provide options for people that just don't want to live in single-family homes. A lot of people, older folks who want to downsize, divorced parents who want to stay in the school district that they raise their kids in, they often want apartments, and they don't want to live in a large single-family home, and it can be very difficult to find that in a lot of suburban communities in Massachusetts. So, now I want to address a couple of common concerns now that I've gone over what this might look like in practice. These might be things you, concerns you have already, or that you've heard from your community, and just want to provide a bit of information. What I hear a bit is school enrollment, people worry about a lot of new housing bringing a large influx of new schoolchildren. Generally across Massachusetts, this is not much of an issue because we see declining school enrollment just about across the whole state, Carver's no exception, there's a graph here of school enrollment in Carver, so you can see pretty consistent declines over the last decade or so, and new housing development is pretty unlikely to reverse that decline. Generally, the trend is that residents of multifamily housing are less likely to have school-aged children than residents of single-family housing. Usually multifamily tends to have more one bedrooms or two bedrooms or even studios, which tend to appeal more to seniors, young couples, single people, and not larger families, so the effect on school enrollment tends to be pretty modest, and there's a fair amount of research on that that I'm happy to share with the planning board if you'd like to learn more. Another big question I get is how would this affect the town's sewer and water responsibilities? I don't think you have a lot of public water and sewer here, if any, I'm not sure, perhaps none.
Yeah, no sewer.
No sewer, perfect.
Who would you know if you were to talk to us, I think?
Certainly, I'm happy to know. And the key thing here is that sewer and water in the zoning district you're asked to design is not your responsibility. The town is under no obligation to pay for any kind of sewer and water access for new developments, and ultimately if a property owner decides they want to build multifamily housing, providing sewer and water service to that property will be their responsibility, and theirs alone, so the town does not need to think about this impossible task of providing sewer to a lot that doesn't have it already, that's going to be the responsibility of the property owner. And the third one I hear a lot is about municipal finances, how will this affect the town's bottom line, usually what people care about most is their wallets. At this point, you're lucky to be the end of this process, there have been four communities now that have paid economic impact consultants to do a study of how this would impact their tax revenue, that's Mansfield, Medfield, Milton, and West That's Mansfield, Medfield, Milton, and West Newbury have all done that now. Those are all available if you're interested in looking into them and diving into them deeper. And what they did is compared the costs they'd incur in terms of municipal staffing, public schools, police and fire, costs from other departments, in terms of property taxes, compared to the property taxes and vehicle excise taxes they'd get from new residents. And all those studies have found that the economic impact would be positive, largely because new residents are paying property taxes, but they tend to have fewer schoolchildren than residents of single-family homes. Also, there's some efficiencies in delivering services to one location for more people versus to a lot of houses across a broader area. But I find people are surprised by this, so I'm happy to share the studies with you if you want to dig into them more. I have a bit more if we can talk through at the end. And the other thing I think is really important to look at in terms of economic impact is just generally how housing growth tends to affect property taxes per capita in Massachusetts. The Massachusetts Taxpayer Foundation has done a lot of great research on this, so I just borrowed a slide from them here. And this is their comparison of how average property taxes per person have changed across communities that have seen different amounts of population growth over the last decade. And what they saw is that towns that had the most population loss saw their property taxes rise the most, and towns that had higher population growth on the right saw their taxes rise less. Now, unfortunately, taxes have risen everywhere, you probably know that and aren't happy about it. But generally, the trend is if you have fewer people splitting the bill for services, property taxes have to go up. If you have some population growth, it allows you to split the bill across more people. And those towns have been able to at least slow the increase of property taxes. So those are some common concerns. Again, happy to take questions about those. I thought I had... Well, I'll get to the end. Oh, yeah, I wanted to talk about the legal cases that have affected this law. You may have read about them in the news. The bottom line is that the legal cases that have surrounded this law haven't had a large impact, but I will review them quickly anyway. So there have been two main legal cases that have challenged this law. The first was Milton versus the Attorney General. This came about when the town of Milton voted not to comply with the law about two years ago, and the Attorney General sued the town. That case went all the way up to the Supreme Judicial Court in Massachusetts, our highest court, and the court ruled the law is constitutional and it's mandatory, it's part of state zoning law, so it's not an optional opt-in or opt-out program for towns. And then the town, the state reissued the initial compliance guidelines as regulations to give them some more legal force. The second lawsuit that happened more recently was that Duxbury and eight other communities sued for exemptions from the MBTA Communities Act based on the argument that it could be an unfunded mandate. They thought that they would incur costs that the state wasn't covering for them, and the state should have to cover those costs. But then the courts ruled that the law is not an unfunded mandate because drawing up zoning bylaws is a regular function of municipal government, it's not an additional responsibility. So again, that case made no change to the law, but I think it's good to just see where we are at this point. The legal process has more or less run out on this law. I don't expect there to be any more cases involving it. And finally, I think it's good to review, you probably know this, about what happens if the town does not decide to approve a multifamily zoning district. You probably know that the town loses eligibility for about 17 state grants that fund things like roadwork, community planning, land conservation, economic development. And then the second thing you have to think about is that the Attorney General recently released a memo saying she'll bring enforcement lawsuits after January 1st of next year. What that will look like, we can't say for sure right now. The way the process will probably run out is that the Attorney General will ask the judge to compel towns to comply in whatever way the judge deems just and proper. So there's a lot of variability there. Some of the things that could happen is there could just simply be escalating fines and fees, there could be the court appointing some kind of official to draw a zoning district for the town, or there could be a ban on denying applications for properties that are 15 units per acre.
I just have to ask you, Will.
Sure.
Listening to this, clearly, you were a big supporter of this. Clearly, you were trying to talk everyone into this. You don't have any other view on this, do you? You're trying to sell us every angle of this.
I certainly, I personally think it will help make housing more affordable.
No, it's not going to. It is not going to. Not here in the town of Carver, I can tell you that right now.
Let them come here and see the town, actually, to see what type of a town this is. This is a small town, and most people move to this town because of that. People have been here for generations, and we like to keep this town small. We can't afford this. As much as it sounds on paper like it's very good for the community, it's a very sad thing because we're going to get people that have lived here for generations moving out and selling their houses. This is going to change the face of this beautiful town forever and ever. And they can, you know, tell us all these things that they're going to... I am just so infuriated, I'm sorry. And I know, you know, you've met this in quite a few towns, but this town is different. This town has cranberry growers that have been around for generations and generations. And to change the face of this town, there's just, it's so... I don't even have a word to say how bad and how sad it is. It makes me want to cry. And I've been here only 51 years, but other people have been here for generations and generations, and they live here because of what we offer to the community. And it might not be a lot in the eyes of everybody up there, but in the eyes of Carver residents, this is very sad, very sad. And you can show us all these facts, but it's not going to change the opinion of how this town feels about it. Thank you.
I'm certainly not here to argue with you.
No, but you're here to put a spin on it. So you're supporting this, and I get that, but I disagree with what, most of what you've said. There's no way that somebody's going to come in and provide affordable housing unless we can delineate a certain amount affordable. It's not going to be market rate, so people in this town can afford something like $3,000 or $4,000 a month, young people. You know, I don't even know where this is applicable. It's not applicable to this town, so I understand that this is your job to present this, but I don't think you know enough about the town of Carver.
Yeah, I'm not a local, all knowledge. You know more than me about Carver, not here to dispute that at all.
We don't have a choice, it's like it's communistic. That's what it feels like to me. We don't have a choice. If we, if we make a choice not to do this, we're going to be punished. And that's the way it looks. And I'm sure there's a lot of town people that are going to agree with me, even though there's nothing we can do. We don't have a choice. It's like living in a communistic community. And it just is so sad. And I really wish they would come here and look at this town and see what it offers to the residents. We're not ready for this. We don't have a police department that's ready for it. And yes, you may say that there's less kids going to school, but you can't guarantee that.
And then you talk about the grants. How many of those grants have we received? Have you done your research on that?
I work with 177 communities, so I don't have that on every town.
No, but that's your spin on this, is to let everybody know that we're not going to receive grants. But I think it's important, if you're making this presentation specific to our town, that you let us know what grants that we have received, that we will not receive, rather than just putting it up there and making us feel like this is a threat, or putting some sort of fear into the residents of this town.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to make any kind of threat, absolutely. My job is to help you understand this law, and I want you to understand...
Oh, I understand, and I don't like it.
I think we understand it pretty well. The word communism is used, I don't like to be too pejorative and too provocative. Collectivistic, I think, is a realistic word. We have a Hobson's Choice. Right now, we are elected or appointed to this board to try and do the work of the town the best we can. We have a Hobson's Choice. Right now, we have to find a way to make the smallest noose fit the smallest neck and get as few people caught in it as possible. So we are, quite frankly, trying to do what we can within the letter of the law to comply. And so that's what we're really concerned with. And I think we are speaking, as far as I can tell, for the members of the public and the people who are taxpayers in this town. This isn't some agenda we on the board, the planning board, have. I think it's a unanimous, or definitely a majority opinion, that to enforce something of this in this town is very wrong-headed. And so we're looking for his advice, basically, to achieve compliance, to have our, what's the expression that we use, to have our root canal with the minimum possible amount of pain. And we bloody well don't like the dentist, so, I mean, that's as close as I can to saying what our approach on this is. We want to comply because we have to comply. Speed limit says 55, we're going to throttle back and go 55 right through that zone. And we're not going to get a ticket if we can help it, but we're not looking to build the Taj Mahal of condominiums, we're not looking, we're not fazed. There's a reason that people aren't building 500-unit neighborhoods in this town. A subdevelopment in this town is five, is like five houses, because you can't cram anything in. And the public sewer, the town sewer, we don't have any. Town water?
It's a joke.
Do you research on that? You know, it's not, I'm not trying to make you feel bad, but I mean honestly, it's, we're, we're dealing with something that doesn't need to be on our plate, shouldn't be on our plate, but we're going to deal with it the best we can, so. That's where our approach on this is.
Yeah, so, look, I'm not telling you how to deal with it, okay? I do know a lot about how you can deal with it, and I want to help you achieve compliance if you want to do so. You also don't have to do that. But I want to make it clear to you, which sounds like you already know, so I shouldn't have brought it up, but what happens if you don't? That was all that last slide intended. And if the town decides you want to take no action, that's your decision, and I have no say in the matter.
Well, we, as the planning board, will, will do what we have to do, and just hope that the residents will come out at the special town meeting and vote the way they want to vote. We'll check that box, but it's up to the townspeople.
Yeah, absolutely. And I think you should probably be honest with yourselves that if the planning board is not supporting it, it's unlikely town meeting will either. You know, you're the experts on planning in this community, and I think, hopefully, the town trusts you, and if you don't support what you're doing, I think it's unlikely to pass, and that's your choice. But if you do want it to move forward, you know, I'm happy to work with you and help you do that, but there's no need to do that if you don't want to.
We've been working very hard to move this forward unquestionably, and I understand it's your job to put a spin on some of these issues, but I think a lot of people wouldn't agree with some of the underlying causes that you're putting forth. You put special master up there, the law currently doesn't give an avenue for a special master. The law currently, as it's stated, only has, they can withhold funding and take it to court. It seems like it's just another threat on there from the state. But the bottom line is that we and the state cannot force the people of this town to vote in any particular matter. They could tell us that we have to vote in this matter, but when people show up at the polls, they're going to vote how they feel they should. 70% of our cost goes to school right now, over half of this town is wetlands, 90-something percent of it has private wells and private sewers. I mean, we're one of the last few small towns left in eastern Massachusetts, and certainly the largest cranberry town, and one of the largest agricultural towns. It just seems like this is just the first step. This is the foot in the door from the state. You're talking about 96, only 4% of land in Massachusetts is allowed for multipurpose homes? See, and that doesn't take into account wetlands, it doesn't take into account coastal communities, it doesn't take into account the lack of public sewer and water, and the ability for the town to sustain some of these developments. The long-term issues facing Carver are going to be what they're going to be, but this board is going to do its job, and it's going to put this forward, and it's going to do to its best ability to bring it forward to the town. People are going to vote how they're going to vote.
Mrs. Shays brought up the 96%, curious about that. How is that quantified?
Yeah, so that's from the, it's a recent project called the Massachusetts Zoning Atlas that is a map of what's legal to build in every part of Massachusetts.
Is it by area, is it by town, is it by state? What's the numerary, what's the zoning?
Yeah, that's land area. So it's 4% of the land area in Massachusetts is legal to build multifamily housing of four units or more.
And the definition of legal is?
The zoning allows it, by right.
So there's no special permit, there's no, I...
Where about that?
I think, you know, Winston Churchill said there's three types of lies, lies, damn lies, and statistics. I think that's got to be a fake number. I'd put my money on that being a fake number. I'm not saying, I'm not saying you're lying to us, I'm saying I think, I can't believe that.
Well, I mean, do you allow multifamily housing in Carver by right anywhere?
This place is, you know, I'm only the associate, I'm a rookie here, so. But again, we're speaking of Carver in exception. I grew, I don't know where you grew up, I grew up right outside the city of Boston, and I certainly saw an awful lot of multifamily housing being built in the 1970s, and the 80s, and the 90s, and the 2000s. And you ever been to Watertown?
I have, but again, it's, Watertown is really close to the city of Boston. There's a couple of communities near Boston that allow multifamily housing.
Watertown might qualify for 4%, actually, it's only four square miles, but I'm not trying to get into an argument here, but, you know, I don't, I don't think that's really relevant to us.
Yeah, I mean, the point is that it's hard to build multifamily housing in Massachusetts. There's very few places you can do it right now, and that makes housing costs go up. If you don't think Carver is the place, that's, that's your own opinion, that's fine. That's just, I'm trying to frame the problem and why zoning policy affects middle-class people's ability to buy a home, and zoning is a huge factor in that.
See, I don't really agree with that. I don't agree that zoning is the overriding factor.
The cost of living.
It's the cost of living, it's tax at Massachusetts, and it's the fact that we're pounding more housing into less space instead of developing other areas like Springfield or Worcester and... But it seems like this area, primarily Cape Cod and eastern Massachusetts, are the bullseye for this.
I actually wanted to bring up, when I noticed when you was talking about the schools, my wife is on the school committee here in town, and I shot her a text asking about the schools, and she actually said, if we add any more kids to the elementary school which we just built a few years ago, it was going to be overflowing. They're already at max now, so if they add any more kids, it's going to be over, so...
So I guess we're excluded from that survey.
You know, I'm confused about that one. This is, there's data on this for every town in the state, and that's what Carver School enrollment looks like. Maybe this particular school, elementary school, was built recently for this kind of capacity that, you know, was built with this trend in mind, entirely possible. I'm not presenting you with fake statistics, you can look this up yourself. It could be wrong, but that's what the state statistics say.
The statistics without, again, a numerary without a denominator, vice versa, is kind of meaningless, and what you're comparing to, where references, school enrollment is declining, the brick rate is declining, yes, that's definitely true, but we're also planning for something linear that is predictable and knowable to the extent that we have data right now, and to come in and cram something different, you know, it's, I'm trying to give an example to be respectful, it's like central planning, it is like central planning, it's like Soviet central planning. We know better, you don't. And that's, so, we're doing like the outer blast of the Soviet Union did. We're saying, okay, Moscow, we'll take care of it, we'll do what you say, and we're trying to find a way to do it so we don't get in trouble.
Look, with all due respect to the communism argument, I mean, at the end of the day, this is about giving private property owners more options of what to do with their own property, period. It's saying, in areas where you can't build multifamily housing right now, now you can, you own the land, and now you have more options for what to do with it. In my mind, it's really about rolling back government red tape and regulation, not the opposite.
I disagree.
They sell more than one size of shoe for a reason.
It's a real subsidiarity. Are there any other questions for Will?
I don't think so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming, Will.
Of course.
Does anyone here tonight? Does anyone here tonight have anything to comment about this subject? Can you come up, Mark, and just identify yourself and sign in?
I'm Mark Sheen, and I live on 19, what I'm sure is trash. Well, you guys all just start with, you tell us that, okay, we're going to set up the zoning, it doesn't mean that we're going to build. I kind of don't know myself, I always wonder if an honest person thinks that it is not going to be built. Well, that's the first one, but my second one is, you tell us that the state's going to, you don't know what it's going to look like.
Could he address his comments to you?
Would you like to address them to me, rather than him directly? Mark, thank you.
Also, he said, he doesn't know what it would look like, but the state would punish the towns who rejected it. And if that's the case, and he makes it sound mandatory, if that's the case, I got to wonder why is he trying to convince us it's a good idea, why bother? Why bother?
Right.
That's all, it was just my question.
Thank you. Anyone else with any comments and/or questions? Please come up.
Follow on Main Street, 151. Madam Chairwoman, I have a question through you to the Opera Center, could you give a little detail on his accommodations on where he lives? Not the town, but could he describe the type of community that he lives in, and the dwelling? I'm interested in that.
I don't know if that's appropriate to ask him that.
Well, I think it is, because we're being, we are being forced to create the zone to allow more people onto town.
Right.
He can come to town, be glad to have him.
Right.
But the question I have is, what is his experience? He's a fairly young guy, I've probably got old sneakers that are older than he is, and I'm curious to, is he an apartment dweller, is he a condo owner, or does he have a single-family home? And how does that relate to his experience in those, that community, to what we have here, and what he's suggesting that the state is telling us, we have to change? And that's what I'd like to know.
I understand why you're asking the question, I just don't know if that's appropriate for us to ask him that question, if he wanted to offer any information, that's his choice, but I don't think that that's our right to ask him that question.
And if I may, I will say that anybody who owns a house doesn't necessarily believe there's a housing crisis, unless you're a person who owns a house that has multi-generations living in it, because your kids have no place else to live. A vast majority of the people I know who got out of college, including my kids, who are both engineers, who both make more money than I do, one lives in Belmont, one lives in Oakland, California, and they live in apartments, for a couple of reasons. First off, younger people have decided there are other methods to do investments rather than the long-term 30 years of a mortgage. There are other investment opportunities that maximize their earnings, and also provides a lot of liquidity. The fact that people have decided not to buy a house is often not because they're financial geniuses, it's because it's not sustainable, it's not something they can do. We look at those dollar numbers, like I said, my daughter Emily, for instance, she's a chemical engineer, she's a data manager for electric hydrogen, she's the smartest person I know, she's the hardest-working person I know, and like I said, she makes more money than me and my wife put together, but she's not looking to buy a house, because there aren't any available, and so these people look and say, this is what I'm going to do, this is where I'm going to live, I love where I'm at, I'm going to be here for as long as I can, and then I'll go somewhere else. But the fact that if you have a house, and you live in your house quite comfortably, you may not realize that, you know, the people who don't have a house, and the people who don't have those opportunities, so, it would not be unusual for someone to come in here who didn't have a place, that they had a mortgage on.
I understand that, Mr. Bott, but what's being proposed is just not the right fit for our town, in my opinion.
I know, but.
But I do understand what you're saying about people who own homes don't see the crisis.
I don't think that's the case. Anybody that's looked to buy a house, or looked to move, or whose kids have moved out, or their friends are looking to buy a house, understands that there's a problem, but is, what's the answer? And the answer is to make it more affordable, but, or to put more money back into the people's hands, that's the argument, this is taxachusetts, there's no argument.
Right.
We're the most expensive state to buy property in, and probably one of the most expensive states to live in.
Yeah, I would agree.
Yet here we are.
Yeah, exactly.
Because we all got here, I got here last, I got here in 1998, the last millennium. If I had waited another six months while I moved up here to invest myself in my retirement at the previous job I had, I would have been priced out of the market.
Right.
You would have had some other charming fellow sitting over here, probably a charming lady, who knows her business, because I would have been priced out of the market in 1998, so, you know. The people who were here, who got a place, started early, or, you know, had the grace of, you know, parents or something like that, to help them get that spot replaced.
Well, as I've said before many times, I'm fortunate enough to have, to live on the land that my great-grandfather purchased in 1893. We've had generations there, so I think that's why I'm even more passionate about this coming into play, and this being forced down our throats, because my family's not the only family that can say that in this town, and I don't like it, I don't like anything about it. We will do what we have to do to check that box, and the residents will come out in the special town election and, you know, do what they want to do. But, and as much as I appreciate Will's presentation, I just think it was completely one-sided.
I would quantify one thing as well, as long as you've been here, I mean, I grew up outside of Boston, my wife and I didn't make a choice when we got married, we didn't make a choice, we didn't go around and say, build housing for us, so we moved stuff, and then we wanted more space, so we looked around and moved to Carver, and we've been almost 25 years now. The, I forgot what I was going to say, I'm sorry, it was the point I wanted to make, and I apologize. I don't have coffee in there, I guess. I'll yield back the remainder of my time, and if it comes to me, I'll.
So, did you wait there?
My name's Bill Martinari. I just moved here four years ago, and this is like a deja vu, because I moved to Citrus, and I lived there for 72 years, and it's a very slippery slope you guys are going down to go back through.
Yeah.
Because they build on wetlands, the zoning board has nothing to do with it, right? And one main question I have to ask is, how is Carver in this whole loop anyways?
Because we're in.
We were put here.
Adjacent.
Because that's what the law says.
We were put in it.
If your town is next to a town with transit, you're.
We're adjacent.
Next to it?
Yes, next to it.
We are a small-town adjacent. Now, there are, there are adjacent towns.
I couldn't figure it out.
Yeah, there are adjacent towns, so Duxbury is an adjacent town, but Carver is a decent small town, so there are two different standards for those sort of things.
But it's a slippery slope if you go down that road.
I completely agree with you.
I got out of there because it got too ridiculous, all right? And I moved to Carver, my father, mother and father have a place in Carver, kids live there, grandkids, this is Citrus, 30 years ago, all right?
And that's what I've said previously at a prior town meeting, I said, you're either born and raised here and you're still here, or you came here because you were attracted to the town, and you like the small-town rural character. So whoever is here now wants to be here, we don't want it changed.
No.
So I agree with you completely.
No, and as far as the school systems, oh yes, they're going to change huge, right?
Oh, they are, everything will change.
Police Department, they're going to have to back up on that one.
Yeah.
I mean, we've got an excellent fire department, and I don't know how that's going to work with all these two, two- and three-story structures.
Right.
You know, and it's just a slippery slope going down.
Yeah. I don't, I think I can speak for most of us here that we don't want this, but we also want to be in compliance, so we will do what we have to do.
You got a great point, one of your aggregates, what grants did you get?
Mm-hmm, yeah, well, that's what I asked it then. I would think that somebody coming in here, supporting this the way you did, Will, that you would have that information available to at least share with us, but it's unfortunate.
That's about it.
If you could just sign in, Mr. Martinari, that would be great.
Keep this town where it is, please.
I did recall the point I wanted to make was, and I've said this before, that if our quota is 235 units, I could see as a planning board member and elsewhere in this town, us adding 235 units of housing organically in the next couple of years, I don't think that is not going to happen. It's just the sort of, again, I'll use the analogy, because I think it's correct, central plan that says one size fits all, or several sizes fit, and one of these will, like, not fit you, that you've got to do something like this, and you've got to find a place to cram it in, and you've got to live with the consequences. It's called an unfunded mandate, I haven't seen any funds, what do we do when the predictions about our school enrollment aren't correct? How do we take a country road, historical, historic buildings, and widen it out and put turning lanes in? You know, this town to McCabe Drive through, and you've got three lanes in some places, but everything narrows down to one road. I was on Route 28 this morning, 45 minutes between Fount lithe and Hyannis, used to be able to do it 25 minutes. It's, what do you do? What do you do? We're being presented with choices that don't have any easy answers, and even if there were dollar signs on them attached to them, it said, don't worry, we'll pay for it. Are we going to pave wetlands? Are we going to knock down historical structures? Are we going to, again, it's exactly what happens when someone who sits in Beacon Hill or in Washington says, we got to do this, and when the rubber hits the road, places like this have a very difficult time.
Right. Mr. Bott?
I was going to say, that is a great transition to our task at hand of determining the three areas that we would like to move forward with the zoning, so.
I think we're all in agreement that we are going to move forward with that. I don't know where Ms. Sardillo is, but we can.
I do.
Oh, okay.
She's fine.
Okay. I would just like her to be here for her vote for this.
She, she may, she may be back.
Okay, very good.
That, people keep in touch, so.
Okay.
She's good.
All right. So to go to our packet from the Barrett Group?
So, if I may, so, we received this, and I forwarded it on to the board members, and there are essentially five areas identified in the chart. Those five areas being Meadowbrook, which could potentially house 304 units, Wenham Road, which could potentially house 191 units, Ward Street, which could potentially house 839 units, Tremont Street, which could potentially house 167 units, and Spring Street Extension, which could potentially house 227 units. So the ask was identify three areas, although, you know, there's at least one area, West Street, that could house all of those, but I believe that our best option is to identify three areas and bring them to town meeting, in the event that the discussion at town meeting is like, well, we like it here, but we don't like it over there. So I would recommend identifying those three areas, let Barrett Group finish their compliance results, and move forward from that. So I've got the maps that they produced for us, I also have the GIS that shows the aerial photograph, people want to look at those previously. The questions come up about Meadowbrook, can you put it on state-owned property, on institutional property? Perhaps, or perhaps not, I think it's still a bit gray, but I think it's one of the places that the board sort of leaned into, that it would be great if they was able to make some upgrades and some additional units in the Meadowbrook area. I, the West Street, I think a lot of people have really liked that, because it's a troubled site. We've talked about before how towns typically don't get a chance to clean things up, to clean up 11 Green Street, a very small oil spill, we spent $100,000 in CPA money to clean up oil and asbestos, you can imagine the cost to clean up West Street, but it is one of those areas where it potentially could be built, and if somebody had to build it, they would clean it up, and it would house a great number of those properties. Tremont Street, 167 properties, and all three of those areas are on, well, West Street isn't exactly, you know, a main road, but there's 19-plus roads that come in and out of Carver. But, you know, Meadowbrook, West Street, and Tremont Street seems like three alternatives that would, are previously disturbed sites. I talked about before in my initial analysis, staying away from greenfield sites, because we really don't want somebody, if this does pass, and someone decides to build something, that they're coming in and cutting down trees, and hauling off sand and soil, and things like that. I think that those areas are more greenlightable for someone to develop on than a property that has to be redeveloped, because it's already been impacted, whether it's here at Meadowbrook or on West Street, or on Tremont Street. We talked about not the chemical, the concrete plant, but the prefab operation beforehand. So with those three areas, you know, we could conceivably have some combination of them provide, you know, 235 units relatively easily. Spring Street Extension, I think Judy said in her memo that those lots would have to go from 60,000 feet to 30,000 square feet, but once again, that's a greenfield site, and while it's proximal to Route 44, it is also essentially in someone's backyard, those are houses, residential houses on Spring Street Extension, and nobody has to buy all those houses, they just have to buy one to get enough frontage to build something behind that. So once again, it's more of a greenfield site, it is essentially in someone's backyard, so whatever the pleasure the board is, we'll send them on to Judy, but my recommendation is to be those previously disturbed sites that aren't greenfield sites, and have some options to go to town meeting with.
Does the board have any comments or questions?
I think Meadowbrook Way is a no-brainer on this. We are allowed some amount of screening and setbacks in regards to development on this, so I would unquestionably think Spring Street is, would be our second-best option, and I would add one or two more lots in there, and then, and then I would think West Street with the open space requirement would be our third best in regards to that.
Mr. Robinson, do you have any thoughts on this?
I actually agree with Connie, that those are probably our worst, best options.
Nicely said. Mr. Lake?
I'll go along with that, too. Kind of not really.
No, I know.
Don't want to do any of them, but.
Which side do you want your root canal on? Top or bottom, which one do you want first, you know?
Right. Well, it seems to me that the four of us have come to a consensus.
So Meadow, Meadowbrook Way, Spring Street, and West Street.
Since this is not a vote, I will officially endorse that consensus.
Well, you're clearly able to chime in, if you're.
Yeah.
I'm official.
So with that, I will convey that information to Barrett Planning Group, and have them get busy on putting together the zoning for us, and complete the modeling of the class model for those three areas.
I would recommend adding a couple lots on the Spring Street.
Okay.
And that way, appropriate screening. And that way, appropriate screening can be established.
Fair enough.
I see the other side of Spring Street wasn't in. I'm not sure.
Yeah, so here's Spring Street, the map of Spring Street.
Is that was because it was a state-owned road or a state-owned land or...
Yeah, that's Route 44 right away. So that is the Spring Street here. So what Judy had identified was basically all those parcels down Spring Street. So you can see through the back, and all those parcels on Spring Street. So that's this one, this one, and all the...
Great. My question was, why wasn't the other side of the street included in here?
Because I think the parcel signs, that's sort of what would be implied that it was those properties that were there.
Well, it would include the other side of the Spring Street Extension. That way, we can set up appropriate setbacks and screening in regards to it. Give us a little bit more land to make the 235 and give us a little wiggle room for both parking and screening. And if not, I would add one or two properties at the very bottom. But I'm not... I would add those in for more for screening, but...
Well, if we were gonna do that, I would almost have to kind of lean towards Spring Street Extension with 312, 314, Tremont Street.
Oh, well, the Spring Street is only eight houses shy. Eight shy, which is why I was recommending adding the other side of the Spring Street.
So both sides of Spring Street Extension?
Yeah. And that would give us a little extra room for the other eight domiciles to be in compliance and maybe give us the ability to appropriately screen it from other properties.
I would agree. To the other side.
All right. We can include those parcel numbers. That's the consensus of the board?
I... That's my thought, yeah.
I would agree with Mr. Shea. Mr. Lake?
Yeah. I'll go along with that.
Okay. Mr. Robinson?
Yeah, that's fine with me.
Okay.
I don't know, both sides. All right. That concludes our business. Oh, actually, there's one other thing. So we have had a lot of discussion about a zoning bylaw. But we don't believe we have formally voted while the warrant is open to submit an article to the Select Board for a 3A zoning bylaw. And I highly recommend, to make it official, that the board take a vote to say, "We are submitting an article to the special town meeting to comply with 3A zoning bylaw." Just so it's... Everybody assumes that we're gonna do, but we really need that vote to...
Very good.
...better find.
And including changes to our zoning bylaws, which are gonna be requisite in regards to that.
Yeah, the zoning art would say, map amendments, zoning amendments to comply with 3A and identify these areas.
Could you get a motion to that?
I would make that motion.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Very good. Mr. Lake?
Says I.
Kevin Robinson says I.
Mr. Shea says I.
Mary Ellen Williams says I.
And once again, I ask my questions, even though you just said all those things out loud. Connie made the motion, and who seconded it?
I did.
Kevin did.
Okay. All right. Listen, all right? That's where we're at. Our next meeting is the 26th.
Sorry, is the public comment over? Or is there availability for one more public comment? Is that over on this issue?
I would let him.
It hasn't been a public hearing. We've been just having this discussion.
You can certainly come up and speak.
Yeah. The reason Joe Rossi, High Street... Reason I came tonight was the concern about placement of this actual location. Hopefully, this isn't built. But thinking that it is, because that's how we have to think, I'm concerned about the placement of this location on Spring Street Extension. Being a High Street resident, this area is already congested between the Cisco trucks that come off of 44, the location across the street that has been well-developed and continues to be developed, along with Plimpton, considering a 40B now at the end of the road there. I think 100 or more units at this location is a mistake because I'm not certain that that exit will be able to handle a lot more traffic should this get built. So I think through the entire 3A discussion, traffic has sort of been left off of one of the concerns. I certainly am concerned because this area keeps getting built. So that would just be my comment on this section.
I appreciate that. And I think you could tell just from the discussions that we have had, our position on this.
Yes.
And I would definitely encourage you to attend the special town meeting.
Sure. Just wanted to make sure that that comment was mentioned here during the discussion of where these are going.
It's because of its local access, immediate access to the highway that was one of the reasons it was chosen, but also the Spring Street Innovation District across the street. That exit was designed to handle a considerable amount more traffic coming from that development than what was approved to be developed there. As a matter of fact, there's no way to even compare what was approved as to what was proposed, which was an innovation district which included multifamily, commercial, town center, as well as industrial and manufacturing in that area. So that was why this came up as one of the areas. And it was to keep the traffic off of the other major roads like High Street because it has an almost direct access to Route 44 right there. That was part of the planning process for that whole area there. So that is why it got brought up into there. But there is no good place in town for it. I mean, where else are you gonna clog up any of the emergency evacuation routes in town? I mean, half the town's water, more than half the town's water, can't put it on those areas. So, I mean, it's the lesser evil of all the evils.
True.
But again, it's not our first choice, so...
Sure.
And it'll be up for the town to decide. But I understand your sentiment.
Yeah.
High Street is a scenic road. Yeah, scenic road, which is why we held the tree airing earlier tonight in regards to that.
Appreciate the background.
No, I appreciate you coming forward tonight. We really do need more people and their input in regards to this. And we need more people involved in local and state government, kind of why we're in the corner we're in right now.
Well, I spent 14 years doing planning or helping planning in the town of Marshfield, so I'm down here in Carver now to get away from some of the issues that were brought up earlier. So I'm not no stranger to being very involved in these types of issues.
Thank you very much for your time tonight.
Slap it out, traffic light, it'll be fine.
All right?
All right. Do you have any... I'm sorry, Mr. Shea.
No, I was... I didn't know where we were.
Oh, okay. I was going to ask Mr. Bott.
Yeah, we're down to planning board members' notes.
Yeah.
Minutes.
Yes, we missed those minutes last week.
6:24 is incomplete.
Yep. That's my job to fill those in.
Yep. So I recommend passing.
Could be a couple minutes before we get to those.
Okay, very good.
But I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of July 10, 2025.
I'll second that.
Mr. Lake?
I.
Kevin Robinson says I.
Mr. Shea says I.
Mary Ellen Williams says I. And I believe, unless you have something else, Mr. Bott?
No, me and I have no things.
No? Okay.
Thank you, everybody, for showing up tonight.
Yes, thank you very much.
Wish more people would come out.
Yes.
We get like a small, little crowd of... It's like, it's gonna affect everybody, and nobody wants to come down.
Fuck, kill, story, jurors, next meeting.
Yeah.
Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second. Adjourn.
Aye. Kevin Robinson says I.
Mr. Shea says I.
Mary Ellen Williams says I.
Good night, all.
Thank you.
How long were you in Marshfield for?